Just try, should I take my sticky note back?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled school board meeting. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to our board meeting. We're glad that you have joined us this evening. We have some recognitions this evening, and so it's always a pleasure to have school folks and students in the audience. So the first student that I'd like to introduce to you is Elizabeth Burry. She is our Leesburg High School Student Government Association co-president, and she will be joining us as our first student representative for the school year. She's going to have a seat up here. Thank you, Mrs. Brandonberg, for welcoming her. Lizzie Burry has been a student at Leesburg High School for the past four years, and each year has actively participated in the Student Government Association. This year, she has been elected as one of two senior student presidents sharing the title, office, and responsibilities of this role. She has also been involved in soccer, Beta Club, Triad, and National Honor Society. Lizzie plans to stay active in clubs and college, considering how beneficial they have been and proven to be during her high school years. Her goals this year include being able to help student government grow in a manner so that not only students know what student government is, but also the community as well. She is very actively involved and a stellar student. She is also joined here, her proud principal, Mr. Neal, is in the audience here supporting Lizzie, and we're just so thrilled to have Lizzie Burry here as our student representative. And we'll get to hear a little bit more about Leesburg High School in just a few minutes later in our agenda, so welcome with that. Board members, I have a few highlights that I'd like to share with you. I'd like to applaud Eustace Heights Elementary School and the entire Eustace community for last Friday. They honored the bravery, courage, and humanity shown after the terrorist attacks of September 11th. They, along with Lost Lake Elementary School, and I know Lost Lake is in the audience as well, had their annual 9/11 commemoration, remembrance, and being that we're on the 15 year anniversary, it was nice to see all the children at our schools, particularly these schools, recognize an event that changed the history of our country at a time when these children weren't even born. And so this is truly history being remembered in their presence. So I thank our schools for their leadership in that. I also want to highlight the culinary teacher, Carol Harrison, at Tiberius Middle School. Her class made lunch for the teachers there, and we're planning to serve those lunches on Friday, September 2nd. That's the day we had the unexpected closure due to the storm. Ms. Harrison didn't want the food to go to waste over the long weekend, so she came in Friday and donated the lunches to the local police officers and dispatchers who were having a very busy day because of the weather and the effects. It was a thoughtful way for her to say thank you to our community, and I want to say thank you to her and the students who prepared the meals, and that is going above and beyond. And so I really want to highlight our teachers and our students who recognize the unsung heroes in our community, and they made a good thing happen out of an unexpected change of plans. Congratulations to Mrs. McLeod and our Finance Department. For the 13th consecutive year, our district has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Financiers Officers Association of the United States and Canada. That's G O F A for short. It's for our comprehensive annual financial report. This is the highest form of recognition in this area of government accounting, and so it's significant in the accomplishments for our department and our CFO. And to have it for 13 consecutive years, and I can speak to the last nine years when we've had financial concerns over, you know, with the financial challenges that districts in Florida faced after 2008, to stay with those accounting practices is just phenomenal. And so I want to say thank you to Mrs. McLeod and her leadership and the Finance Department. And lastly, I want our schools, want everyone to know that our schools will be participating in the Dads Take Your Child to School Day. That's going to be on September 18th. The state launched this initiative years, last year, and this year, we're hoping to see even more participation in Lake County. Our schools received dads, they had donuts with dads, they had breakfasts, they had photo opportunities, and we've had grandfathers, we've had significant male role models that have come and been here for students, and we know that this is an important day, and we recognize all parents that come to support their child on that day. Even moms come, so we're really pleased to have family members come, and so...
Which day did you say that was?
September 28th.
Okay.
And so those are just a few highlights for the meeting tonight. As far as changes, amendments, additions to the agenda, I'd like to pull 8.04 for no action tonight, 8.11 for no action tonight. I believe 9.06, we have a card on that one, so that'll be for separate consideration. And I also have a time-sensitive item on how to deal with the makeup for the storm day on September 2nd. The time sensitivity of it, Chairman, is because there's a lot of questions out there, regardless of which option we use to make up the day. People need to plan accordingly, and we need to address the employee concerns with that one. So I'd ask you to deem that one as time-sensitive.
We'll bring that in right before discussion.
Great. So at this time, I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting of August 22nd, 2016, as presented.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Carmen Cullen-Batt to do our recognition for our five-star school awards.
Thank you, Dr. Moxley, school board chairman, school board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity, and Dr. Moxley, would you please join me? The Education Foundation serves as your liaison with the Department of Education on collecting information, being the clearinghouse for awards that the district is eligible for, and I am absolutely thrilled to say that we have 12 five-star schools for the 2015-2016, the first one being Claremont Elementary. And I believe Assistant Principal Chet Tull is with us. Eustace Heights Elementary, Mr. Fraser. Imagine Schools at South Lake, Nikki Anderson. Lost Lake Elementary, Ms. Pegram and Ms. Pinkston. Round Lake Elementary, Ms. Bartburger. Sawgrass Bay Elementary, Ms. Montez. Seminole Springs Elementary, Ms. Fisher. Sorrento Elementary, Ms. Burkhead and Ms. Devoe. And Triangle Elementary, Ms. Blark.
All right, we would love to give you another round of applause. And we'd like you to come around a little bit.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Jarvis.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 I am a senior at Leesburg High School. It has been an honor being a part of student government since my freshman year, and this year I am pleased to be one out of the two student government presidents. My co-president, Callie Grimes, my vice president, Reagan Young, my secretary, Martinez McDuffie, my treasurer, Elena Monahan, and my marketing director, Morgan Quayre, are all trying their very best to help along the students as a whole. Under us, under our six officers, we have our student council members, who are we working on this week for getting them voting? And there are four for seniors, four for juniors, three for sophomores, and three for freshmen. While we have established officer positions for student government, voting for student council members will take place during this week. With student council members in mind, our plan is to make sure each grade level fundraises enough money to support them throughout their years, and by the time they are juniors, have enough money to pay for prom. Another goal for student government is trying to accomplish this year is for Beta National Honor Society and other clubs to help publicize the fundraisers around town, receiving more help from the community. By doing this, we will try our very best to attend at least one meeting at the school board with one representative, updating everyone on what is new and how the community can help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next report is Educational Foundation with Carmen Cullen-Bett.
Thank you. Apple Mart opened on the 17th of August, and to date, we've had eighty-eight teachers come through the three stores with a value of $6,600. Red for Ed, which was our countywide school supply drive, which we combined with our back-to-school fairs this year, collected during the event and the week after over $5,700 pounds in school supplies, and that was up from the $4,300 pounds the year before. In addition to that, we came in at almost $2,000 and 314 pounds in food, and I would love to say that we're finished collecting, which I'll never say. This past Saturday, we had raceboat Russ out with a poker one on our waters doing a school collection drive, and Mr. Major and I enjoyed a ride in a speedboat that goes 120 miles an hour. But we did get school supplies, so we were real excited about that. Unlocked the initiative that we enrolled last year and the teachers worked on over the summer, we ended up with fifty-four concepts, and those were narrowed down to five different concepts, and those teachers have been assigned a CEO, a public relations professional, and a CPA to help develop their concept into a sustainable business model. And they'll be working on that between now and October, and on October the 26th, we will have a community-wide judging of who, if any, or all will be funded and at what levels. We currently have 50,000 in the overall pot to fund those initiatives. The spelling bee for Take Stock in Children is this Thursday night at Lake Receptions, and this is our corporate spelling bee, and this is our fifteenth year. Our Scott Strong Golf Tournament is scheduled for Mission Inn on Friday, October the 21st, and we'd encourage you to please join us and help our golfers get off that morning. And then our Renaissance Fair is November 4th, 5th, and 6th, with the 4th being Education Day and the 6th being Senior Day. And we extended the event to six days this year because on Veterans Day, we're inviting anyone with a military ID to come in for free. So we're expecting that Friday to be a huge day. Our chefs are working. We have 190 kids that auditioned weekend before last at South Lake, and we cut the cast to 150, and so they've been working. They had SCA in last week, teaching them calligraphy, how to fence, how to play games in Renaissance time, so they're underway and will be meeting every Saturday between now and the fair. And then I was notified by the Economic Development Division of the county that Mike Stone, who was our board member, our incoming president that passed away in July, the fields at Hickory Point will be dedicated in his name and his honor on October the 29th at 10:00 a.m. And after that event, we are unveiling the Excalibur Stone at Renaissance Fair, and we actually have a stone that will be mounted in and applied in his honor right after that event. Our next board meeting for the executive is on the 21st at noon, and then the actual board meeting will be the 28th at the district office in conference room A. Any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. Nothing other than Thursday, I'll be in Jacksonville for the appellate argument on the Carver Middle School case, and unless I hear any objection, there's a couple of arguments to make that would essentially require the do-over of the entire matter. I'm going to suggest to the court that my client's preference is to get an answer to the one issue that we would like the answer to is the extent of the Equal Access Act as it applies to middle schools. And if we can get an answer to that question, good or bad, we'd rather have that answer than go win and end up going through another trial, doing this all over again. So that's what I'm going to ask them to do.
Hold on. Say trouble. Okay.
There's no unfinished business, so at this time, I'd like to recommend approval of the consent agenda items 8.01 through 8.03, 8.05 through 8.10, 8.12 through 8.14, 9.01 through 9.05, 9.07 through 9.11, 10.01 through 10.18, with agenda items 8.04 and 8.11 being pulled for no action, and 9.06 being pulled for separate consideration.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five vote.
9.06 is being pulled for separate consideration. Do you have a public input card?
Yes. Mrs. Stewart?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before we start.
Sure.
Ms. Stewart, you understand that the time period hasn't run for the appeal yet or for a request for a hearing by your client? And if we're going to proceed with a hearing, if he requests an appeal, then the board is possibly either/or one board member may sit as the hearing officer. So I just want it understood before you start talking to them about issues that may come before them in a quasi-judicial capacity, that you waive any objection that you have at a later time from what they hear from you today from serving either as the panel or as the individual hearing officer?
I have actually, this afternoon, sent a letter to Susan Moxley requesting that hearing.
Then that's not appropriate for you to talk to them here tonight. We did not, I was asking whether your time had run earlier. I would have said something to you about, I was told that the time hasn't run yet, so that, and that we did not receive, had not received as of this afternoon, that notice. But if that's the case, then this board will either probably one of the members sitting as a hearing officer, and certainly it's all going to come back to them as a final hearing. So I'm sorry, but I just don't think it appropriate for you to talk to them about your client's case right now.
At this point, does this matter move forward?
Yes, ma'am. There'll be a hearing officer. If you've requested a hearing, then the next step, a hearing officer will be assigned. That hearing officer will then issue a recommended order and will come back to the board.
And as of today, my client was on unpaid leave. How does that affect him going forward?
That's being continued, and you may also appeal the unpaid leave award. The superintendent has the authority to do that on her own, but the board continues that unpaid leave because the superintendent is limited to the number of days that she can put an employee on unpaid leave. But that also is appealable if you wish to appeal the leave as well.
And do we have an idea of when the hearing would go forward?
It really depends on which avenue that we use, but probably within a couple of weeks, I would think, is what we've usually done.
Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, then, I'd like to recommend approval of the notification of non-instructional personnel transactions list for the 2016-17 school year as presented in board docs.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. We have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five vote.
Okay, board members, then, oh, you have--
We're at the emergency, right?
Yes, we're at the emergency item. I think, do we, did you deem it an emergency? I'm not sure whether you did.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're getting ready to discuss it. So Mrs. Cronin, and then Mrs. Phelps.
Good evening. Here to discuss the storm day. I've kind of given you, oh, sorry, yep, given you some copies of emails that have been going out to the employees since last Friday afternoon. Some of these employees weren't notified, they were notified by their administrators or supervisors late Friday afternoon. I'm going to start off with something I didn't give you a copy of, is a screenshot of the Lake County Schools website the morning that school closed. This was taken at 5:47 in the morning, stating that school is open. Five o'clock news stated Lake County would have school that Friday. You see the message that went out at 6:01. A lot of employees, classified employees, have left their homes to go to work by 6:00. Some of them are working at 6:00. Employees that showed up for work, mostly bus drivers, I'll say, that got up, listened to the news, got ready, and left for work in the stormy weather because they knew they had students to pick up. Some of them arrived at work and had already left on their buses. Others had come to work to find out that school was canceled for the day. You know, it takes, it takes a lot for people to come out to do what needs to be done for the students of this district. And for you to say you're not going to pay these employees for showing up for work when they were doing what they thought was the right thing to do is wrong. There should be some type of pay for coming to work. It just, I just can't believe that you would say there's no pay. I was told that the bus drivers that drove would get paid for the time they were on their bus. There should be, there should be an amount of hours that are paid for showing up to I'm not quite sure why we're not using the November 21st storm day. This was an approved calendar. It was approved from the board. It was voted on by parents and workers, and now we're not using that day. It doesn't seem that it's fair that all employees are being treated equally here in order to make up their time. Classified employees don't, don't make a lot of money. They can't go without a day's pay, and now they were told that they, they had to turn in a leave form for vacation or sick. A lot of these classified workers don't have vacation time. It seems as though you've created a mess, and I guess as of that morning, you already knew you weren't going to use a planned day because you told other workers to come in at 9:30. Some of those workers worked their eight hours a day. Others did not. They were sent home early. Now, those employees that were sent home early are being told they need to make up the time that they went home early for. It wasn't their, it wasn't their, you know, choice to go home early. They were told to go home early. You'll notice in a lot of these emails that were sent out to employees, I highlighted a lot of it, I know my minutes are up, but the employees, some of these employees went home at 12:00. We have some employees that had worked the Friday and Saturday, the Saturday and Sunday, I'm sorry, before this week, okay? So Friday would have been their last day of work. So you'll see the last page is an email to one of the employees that's being told that she is getting straight time for some of her overtime because their records show that she left early on Friday, September 2nd, with approval. Well, she wasn't given a choice. She was told to go home. Another issue that, that needs to be addressed, and I did discuss this with Carol McLeod and Lori Marshall this morning, is that last day before, workday before holiday, employees get to leave a half hour early if their job lets them do that. So if you have students, you normally can't do that. So some of these employees should gain another half hour, such as this employee, you know, she left actually two hours early. These employees that left at 12:00, I know, didn't take lunch either. But it just, it just doesn't seem right that employees were sent home after they were told to come in at 9:30, now they're being asked to make up the time. Doesn't seem right that employees that came to work and told to go home because school was closed, they aren't receiving any pay either. You'll notice on all of these emails that went out to classified workers, I underlined a lot of it, where it's, where it states that paychecks for teachers, administrators, and professional men and generally employers will not be impacted. You know, I realize that they're salaried employees, but these employees could have been paid for this day without having to use a sick day up, and when they made up their time, that would have been their pay. If they didn't come to that makeup day, they would have, they would have been docked pay. The, the days for the teacher assistant and the food service workers, those were scheduled workshop days that are mandatory for these employees to attend. So they will be attending these, this workshop, but now they've also lost a sick day if they gave it up. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Phelps?
Thank you. I've never done this before. I'm a TA at Pine Ridge, ESCVETA. I'm a non-instructional. I've been in the school district for 16 years, and I know, I'm pretty sure when we had the hurricane days in 2004, we had makeup days, and we did those makeup days. And a lot of the TAs that I work with at Pine Ridge are moms who have students. So they have the calendar that was approved, and they knew right away, okay, we're going to come in on that Monday for Thanksgiving holiday because that was planned. So I kind of agree with Kim, to give up a sick day, we only get sick days, we don't get vacation days. And I want to say that in 2015, I had gotten breast cancer, and I had given a day to the sick bank, thank God, and I love that sick bank. But now, some of these people were trying to save their days to maybe give to the sick bank, and now they're short a day because they had to give a day for a day that they didn't plan on being out. It wasn't there, under their control, and they thought, well, we would get paid for that hurricane day, and then when we worked on that Monday, that the 21st of Thanksgiving holiday, that we wouldn't get paid. Like, just that day, we, the hurricane day, we would have got paid for. So we wouldn't be docked this paycheck, but we are being docked this paycheck if we don't give a sick day, because I don't want to give my sick day up. I want to have enough days just in case I need to give to the sick bank again if I have to use it, and that's a great thing to have is that sick bank. So I agree with Kim. A lot of the TAs don't understand what's going on. The non-instructional people, a lot of custodians at our school, they're not, they're not understanding why they have to give a vacation day or a sick day. They have at least a vacation day, but we don't have, we just have sick days. So it kind of makes us feel like we're losing out. We were planning on making up that day on that Monday, but now I guess it's changed, so we're all confused. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board members, what you have before you? Again, there are several options that we can go with. One, the calendar has been built many, many years, where we always build sick, makeup, storm makeup days. For the past 12 years, we have not had to use any of those sick days. I mean, I'm sorry, the storm makeup days, have not used. And they've been built into the calendar, and they've, and they vary where they are. When we only had Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for Thanksgiving, they were usually built on one of the Wednesdays, or it was built into the winter break holiday. But those are the only places you have to go to put sick, storm makeup days. So in this particular situation, the speakers are correct. Those have been built into the calendar. When, and again, the past 12 years, a lot of times, you know, we, they're there and everybody acknowledges them, but because we've never had to use them, again, everybody was hopeful that we would be using them again this year. So once the storm did come, and yes, it is correct that we did not and did not have the luxury of calling it the night before because there, all the reports, and I was up with Mr. Carpenter from the EOC all the way past 11:30 that night. We were out getting, the last report came in at 11:00. It was with sustained winds at 20 to 25 miles an hour, and there would be some wind gusts that come in. It was suggested that the gusts that came in in the middle of the night was going to be the most severe, and the one in the morning wouldn't be quite as severe. Well, we can put buses on the road at 20 to 25 miles an hour. That morning, though, however, at 4:30 and 5:00, when I was on the phone with Mr. Carpenter, and we were clocking winds at over 45 miles an hour in the Leesburg area, and those of you that live in Leesburg, you know the sheets of rain and the wind that was coming. And that two-hour window of time was right when we were putting high school students on the bus, and then we were turning around doing elementary runs. And the weather was not conducive to putting buses on the road. And in my conversation with transportation and Mr. Carr at, you know, 5:15, I think it was that morning, there were concerns about letting buses roll at that time in certain areas. We had trees down and blocking some of the roads on, off of Highway 50, those kinds of things, so a call was made. Right or wrong, some people agree with it, some people don't, but we erred in the sight of caution. I erred in the sight of caution, with a caution for putting students on the road. Yes, there were some people that did, that were already en route to pick up their buses, and we did say, and we're working through all of that, if you, if you showed up for work and you were on your bus, and again, there is a question about, well, if you showed up for work, you know, the question is, but you didn't start on your bus and pull out. We know that people came to work, and we are working through. It is not that those people will not be paid for not coming and, and, and working. If they came to work that morning, we're working through them, we're identifying who those people are, who the bus drivers are. They came, got on their buses, and were ready to roll, or actually did pull out. We will know and have a list of that. So again, if an hourly-wage employee works, we have to pay them. Okay? So we under, that's not even up for discussion. We are required by Fair Labor Standards Act to pay those people. We also knew that about 8:30 or 9:00, somewhere, it was somewhere in that window of 8:00 to 10:00, that the weather would change, and it could even be scattered clouds and a peek of sunshine, which actually, about noon, that actually did occur. So in an overabundance of caution, we did say 12-month people, because 12-month people have a harder time to make up the days. There are not many days for 12-month people to, to make up unless you hit like New Year's Day or, or things like that. So it's better for them to go ahead and come in. But we said, we wanted everybody, because depending on where you were in the county, the conditions were very different, we said everybody needed to be in place by 9:30. But we had some people come in, they were in checking their schools, or they were, it was conducive for them. We had people here at 8:30, we had people here at 9:00, those kinds of things. I am not aware of who sent people home at noon. That never came from my office. We knew that if people showed up by 9:30, we would get six hours of work in and, and with that. We did honor the contract that says 30 minutes before, you can leave 30 minutes earlier if it's a day before a holiday. We did honor that and that. We had many people that were already on approved leaves. And so we have people that are on approved leaves that were, were being docked eight hours for being on an approved leave that were not even scheduled for whatever day, for whatever reason they had asked for that day off. So now we have a situation where we have 12-month people that are working six hours, we have 12-month people and other people that were being docked eight hours. There was an inequity there with that. We have other situations where the question came up about, okay, now what do we do about the makeup time? And so someone referenced back in '04 when we had the hurricane makeup times. Believe it or not, I have those documents. We did a combination of the storm makeup days and suspending early release Wednesday. We had to do both of them because there were multiple days. The early release Wednesday worked very, very well back then, and so that was an idea that was brought forward, is that, is that a possibility? So the first question that was asked is, one, do we even need to make up the day? Because there were some school districts that said, we're not going to make up the day. Most are, because just like those districts, we are in the same situation, that you have to have a minimum number of hours of straight instructional time to qualify for funding. And we have some schools, some levels, that meet that requirement if they didn't make up the day. But we have other schools in our district, based on the bell schedule, that we do not meet the minimum required for funding. I am not going to compromise funding, obviously. We need to make up the day. So that wasn't even an option of, do we, do we not make up the day? Do we make up the day? We have to make up the day because we have some schools that do not have the minimum required hours if we don't make up the day. So we're not going to compromise funding, so that, so again, that was a given, we needed to make up the day. So the next question was, is that, how do we make up the day? Yes, November 21st, the Monday, is a day that could be made up. Now, that is a day that 12-month people are scheduled to work, meaning it's a forced shutdown. So 12-month people, they must take leave on Monday, Tuesday, and Tuesday of that week because it's a forced shutdown. And we've done that a number of years because we shut everything down, we saved the utility, those kinds of things. It was a nice, to give everybody that week. It, it also was an employee, employee favorable for everybody to do that. We used to shut down in July, and we don't do that around, and this was three days as opposed to a whole week. So again, we don't have to do that. If we don't do that, 12-month people would be working Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday unless they chose to take vacation leave. A good many of them did, so we, again, have that forced shutdown. So if we have the 21st, 12-month people would be working that, they're, they just wouldn't take leave that day. Okay? But that still doesn't address the time for 12-month people that is, that wasn't worked on the 2nd. So either we need to equalize the people that were on leave and only charged them six hours, or we need the others to make up the work. How that got or where that got communicated, the people were sent home and didn't have to make up the two hours to make it a full eight hours. I don't know where that came, I can't speak to that. That never came out of my office. That may have been rumor mill, that may have been people speculating, I don't know, but I don't know the answer to that question. But I know it did come out of my office. So the other, so now we have a situation of salaried people, their, their paychecks are already figured out equal for the year because of the salary requirements. Those people need to make up the time. Yes, that is correct. Their pay is not impacted because it's already divvied up in equal amounts for paycheck for their contractual year. Hourly wage employees are governed by Fair Labor Standards Act, and for example, you, if people worked, you must pay them. That's what the law says. But if people don't work, they don't get paid. So you can't pay people for work that they didn't get paid, or they didn't work. You can't, so in essence, if we are going to take hourly-wage employees, and, and my approach to this is I wanted to be keenly aware and be favorable to employees, because I recognize hourly-wage people did not work on that day, not by their fault, but by the act of the weather. They were not coming into work. We can't pay them. We can't front them money for work they didn't pay. Now, I realize in my, for what was brought up here, I would love to be able to do that because I recognize that now I have employees in this paycheck that are going to not receive one day of pay because they didn't work it. So I have no way of paying them for work that they didn't perform. And if we make it up, they're going to get paid when we make up the day. So in an over, I guess, and again, I, I step back and say, obviously, we have some folks that don't, don't want this option. We put this in play for one, one reason, is that if an employee, because we know that they were planning on their paycheck coming in, now they're not going to have eight hours worth of pay, if they wanted to have the eight hours of pay because they need that, we were going to-- So, in an over, I guess, and, and again, I, I step back and say, obviously, we have some folks that don't, don't want this option. We put this in play for one, one reason, is that if an employee, because we know that they were planning on their paycheck coming in, now they're not going to have eight hours worth of pay, if they wanted to have the eight hours of pay because they need that, we were going to honor if they wanted to use sick leave for that. Again, we were being very broad and very generous with that. But again, if they didn't want to, we understand that as well. We, I just had no mechanism to pay them for work that they didn't pay, that they didn't work, or they weren't on an approved leave. So, with that, that's, that's problem, that's first problem with employees. We also heard on Facebook, a lot of parents talking about, oh my goodness, now we've got to make up the day on Thanksgiving, this plan, this plan, this plan. Not that they were taking vacations, but they had plans with family, all those kinds of things. So, then we got, could it be April 14th? And yes, it can be April 14th. That is certainly an option. But I also know that if we're going to have school in session, whether it's November 21st, November 22nd, or April 14th, buses are going to have to roll, lunches are going to have to be served, people have to be here to assist with whatever their role is, both salaried people, no problem. You know, they're, they're, they're already there, you know, there. But I need bus drivers to be there, I need food service, I need secretaries, I need all our hour, I need custodians, I need all our hourly-wage employees. So, we're now going to be in a situation where they're not going to get paid for not working the second, and we're going to make them wait all the way till April 14th to make up that day and become whole to get that pay. I thought that was incredibly a long time to wait. So, that is why we started looking at, well, gee, if parents would like, you know, wants us to consider not doing it on the 21st or 22nd. For employees, we wanted to expedite that, so that they weren't out their pay, that's when the early release Wednesdays came up as an option, because we had done that 12 years ago, it, it worked very, very well. And so, granted, we had to do a combination, because I think we had to make up three or four days at that point in time. That's when we came up with, okay, if we did, suspended the early release day, if you look at a school day, it's six to six and a half hours, because you have to do, provide for lunch, you have to provide for changing of classes, you have to, if there's any assemblies in the school day. For, for financial, for funded, it's five hours of instruction. We could put five hours of pure instruction by doing five early release Wednesdays, suspending those, schools already here, those kinds of things are already in play. And that was very user-friendly to parents, and to the, the making of five hours of instruction, rather than pulling students in for six and a half hours, because you don't need to have all those other things, you can make it up that way. Then we looked at, how do we make our employees whole? And we looked at the ability to make employees whole, whole with their, their pay on October 17th. We looked at other ways for employees to make it up, but we're treating everybody the same. Everybody's expected to make up their time, everybody will be made whole. If you're paid as a salaried person, you're going to make up the time. Nobody is, is being asked, or being paid that they're not working for it, whether you're salaried or hourly wage. The problem that we found ourselves in is that, how do we pay employees on an hourly-wage basis when they didn't work? That's the biggest dilemma. Now, the question is, can you, as a board, I don't have the authority to do that. Do you, as a board, want to go ahead and pay everybody for not working, and then do, you know, expecting everybody to make it up later? I mean, I, I don't know whether you can do that or not, that might be a statutory question that Mr. Johnson would have to weigh in on, too. I just know I don't have the authority to do that, and based on what we have always operated from, is you can't front people and pay them for things they did not work, if they're hourly-wage employees. Is that fair with salaried people? Probably not, but they're two different structures with that. So, what you have before you was our thinking. Now, what did I do? I spoke with our three-level principal representatives, and, and talked with them. I actually, last Friday morning at 8:00, met with Stuart Clapp, met with, met with Sandy Gamble, we talked about this, we talked about what was being proposed on the table, gave them an opportunity to give feedback with it. Again, no solution is 100% right. And what is probably conducive for parents and families is the early release Wednesday. What is conducive for employees, and certainly what would be easier, is to just have the makeup day. Again, I, I presented this as a way to be as employee-friendly as possible, it may not be, I guess, seen by people that spoke to it as employee-friendly, that was really the intent behind it, is to make everybody whole as soon as possible from a pay standpoint. We, right now, whether we do a makeup day, or whether we do the early release Wednesday, people that did not work on the second, if they're hourly-wage, are scheduled not to be paid for that day, because they did not work it. If they wanted to be paid, we gave them the option of taking sick. If, and so, Board, what you have before you is a recommendation for students to make it up, as early release Wednesdays to be suspended, and as employees, you'll see, we have a breakdown of how everybody can make it up. If you choose to go a different direction, and you want to do, make it up on November the 21st, that's certainly within your prerogative to do that, then what will happen is, employees will not be paid, just, and they'll wait till November 22nd, or 21st, to be paid, and we will run school just like a regular six-and-a-half-hour day, everybody will come, we will give every, we'll have to go back and give people that took leave, we'll reinstate their leave, but they also will not be paid until November 21st, when they work. Again, I don't know whether you'll have a lineup of parents in here concerned about November 21st or not, I don't know. It is on the calendar, it was approved, it was communicated. My recommendation here, I believe, was parent-friendly, was respecting the week that we have for Thanksgiving holiday, it was also giving employees an opportunity to be made whole way before November 21st, and everybody would be made whole by that date. So, you, you have my recommendation, and I certainly turn it over to you, Board members, to give me direction on how you'd like to go.
Okay, you willing to start the conversation?
I, I've got a couple of questions from an historical standpoint. Okay, so, back in 2004, when there were some makeup days, the employees didn't get paid for those days until the actual makeup work occurred?
I can't speak to that. The only reason why I know what I know is because I did the HR and the administrative side of it. I can't speak to the payroll side of it, and I hadn't, I hadn't, I tried to go back and figure out what was done there, and I, I, I just couldn't, couldn't do that. So, I can't speak to that, Mr. Dodd, personally, on that.
And, um...
I also know, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I also know, at that point in time, there were those three storms back-to-back, that there were days when the whole building was shut down, it wasn't safe for anybody to come out, so we even had a 12-month employee situation there.
A moment ago, you had alerted, alluded to potential statutory implications, and, maybe that might or may not drive some of the discussion on the Board, but based on the FLSA rules and laws, we, we can't pay, we can't front, is that correct?
I apologize, I just heard about all this this afternoon, but my recollection is there's a statute somewhere in the education code that says that you, the school district can't pay employees for work they did not do.
Okay.
So, I don't, I, I...
As far as, whether it's in the FLSA as well, I'm not sure, but...
But either...
My recollection is that there's specifically a, a education code statute that talks about that, and it relates more specifically, I think, to providing extra money to administrative staff and teachers.
Okay.
I, I know that FLSA says that if they work, you must pay them, but I don't know about the reverse, but the statute that Mr. Johnson's talking about is one that I recall.
And I just can't remember, I haven't had time to look it up.
I need one qualifier, because is, what I have heard is, we had the calendar day, that's the rule, the parents, everyone saw it, but in this case, when, when those that contacted me that are hourly, was there an expectation that they would be paid, and somehow it would be credited or something? Is that the expectation? Because that doesn't seem, based on what we're hearing, that that's possible, so...
I, I think what I understood is that 12-month people came and reported, some people reported at 7:00, because they had responsibilities for facilities, and then there was a misunderstanding. So, I've been told, I don't know this, and I don't know why, that because everybody else was coming in at 9:30 and leaving at the end of the workday, they would only be working six hours. And at that point in time, it wasn't discussed who would be making up what, because we were just dealing with the storm issues, that people that came in at 7:00, that at the end of six hours, there was a discussion, I have been told now, that, well, you work the same number as everybody else is working today, you shouldn't have to work longer. I don't know where that interpretation came from, it never came to my office for clarification.
I, I do want to say one thing, because I was knee-deep in this, as the superintendent over speaking about it, that the decision was right. The, the decision was right to protect our children, and that, and that in our subsequent conversations, that those employees that didn't get the message and got on the road, that came to drive their buses or whatever, we're going to sort that out. You know, that, that those people that worked are going to be paid. And that, in my mind, what, what I found, I'm just going to give you the whole conversation, because Mrs. McLeod called me, and that she had met with both Sandy and Stuart, and that it, to me, was, we were trying to protect our people by letting them take this leave so their check wouldn't be affected, right? And so, that's why, now I'm kind of understanding why, if, if there was the idea that you were going to bank this time, you'd be paid, and that sometime in the future, I, I don't even know that that's even logical, that you would think that.
No, I, that was not my thinking.
No, 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 I'm saying, if that was the opinion, let me, because we're having a discussion about this, Mr. Gamble, come up, please.
Yes, in regards to this, we were trying to protect the employees to keep them whole, because at that time, it was said, we're not going to pay them if they're not here. But if they go back and do recollection, when we started the school year years back, before the employees that could become 12-month pay, when the 10-month employees came on, they were paid ahead of their time that they worked, because they were given equal checks over 21, or actually, 20 equal checks and then one partial check. They were paid ahead, and that's why whenever people would maybe quit after spring break, they would have to go back and pull time back out of their check, because they had been paid ahead. We've had that problem before, and that's why this option came up, where employees that were available to work and get 12-month pay, like cafeteria managers and all that met the requirement, then it took some of that issue away, because now they're not paid ahead of what they worked. So, this is something that has been working here in the school district for years, that employees have been paid ahead of the time that they work, because of the way it's done.
Okay, is that accurate?
Partially.
Oh, Jesus. Okay, come right up here, please.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Gamble is partially correct, and historically, I can only go back with you 10 years. So, yes, we've had the days in the calendar, and no, fortunately, we've not had to use them. 2004, '05, I was with another school district, obviously, we had the same situation going on. When we had the conversation, and Mr. Johnson's absolutely correct, there's a Florida statute that basically says we can't expend funds before the work has been done. Fair Labor Standards has to do with the other side of the coin, in that, when an employee works, we must pay them.
Right, of course.
That dictates overtime and all of those issues, but they're not expending funds before the services have been provided, it's Florida statute. What happened in the old system is, again...
When you say old system, how long?
The old term system, that was in this district for 30 years, the payroll system that was used.
It's only changed over the past few years.
Few years, yeah.
It was before Skyward.
It was before, and what happened was, so that our employees do get checks when we're closed over winter break and over spring break, if you look at how the payrolls, it lists what days they're being paid for, and it doesn't follow a clean two-week period, because it's to spread it out so that those employees do receive checks. If we paid people strictly by their hours, our folks on, mostly our hourly people, would not get checks over the winter break. And that is, again, something that over time, we've looked at. So, what's happened is, maybe that first week, they were paid ahead, but then by about September, they're caught up to where the, the schedule is what we're paying for them for what they have already worked. When this came up, again, the conversation really was, we didn't want these folks to go without pay, but if you didn't work, how do I pay them? So, giving them the option of using the leave now, so that their check wouldn't be affected, we believed was being employee-friendly.
Right, I agree with that.
Not forcing them, but giving them the option, because, again, there are, you know, folks on week-to-week, and, and they couldn't afford to do that, and so we certainly didn't want to put them into that situation by our action.
But going back to the 2004 storms, no employees were impacted from all of those, the 12-month employees were not told, you're going to have to make these days up. I was a 12-month employee, I was not told that, because we came out, and actually, some of us worked during the storms. Of course, I didn't get paid, I helped my wife in the kitchen, they wouldn't pay me, but they paid other maintenance employees. But I'm just saying, none of our employees were impacted from the storm back in 2004, where we lost pay, and we had to go in, 12-month employees, okay, you're going to have to work during Christmas break, or something like that, to make up the time, that was not done.
I can just tell you that I've got the documentation on the schedule of how that was done, I don't have it with me tonight, but I can pull that, I don't want to, I don't want to speak off the top of my head, but there were, there were makeup days, and you had to have people, you had to have principals at schools when students were making up days, so people had to make up days somewhere in there, because we were...
The schools, the 10-month employees and the students, yes, that was...
Right.
There were five days then that were made up, and that was in October of 2004, it came back to the Board, and you issued a revised work schedule.
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay.
Can I ask a question? In regards to the October 17th training, like the in-service day that they've got, that is, if they did not take their sick leave, then they would come to one of those trainings, correct? Would there be a possibility that if they came, if they take their sick leave now, that if they choose to come to that training, they would earn their sick leave back?
Yes, we would have to go in and edit that, and do that. However, one of the things, like, you're talking about the training on, there are some folks that that was a training for them to come, that they were going to be paid above and beyond their day.
Right.
So, if, we would work through that.
They could have the option.
Yeah, because we had some people that they're a four-hour employee, they're coming to a six-hour training, so if they wanted to use those four hours as their makeup, but the training's six, it would be paid an additional two...
Sure.
...hours for that. If they had taken a sick day here, now, and then they're attending the six hours, then they would pay paid the six hours.
What she's asking is, could they get their sick?
Because that's what I'm...
Yes, then we, then what we would do is, is, then they would not be paid, and we would go in and edit the leave.
Okay.
But again, Board members, I have to say to you, what we were trying to do was be friendly to parents in the community, be employee-friendly. If the, if the desire of this Board is, you want to say, we're going to do one of those makeup days, I understand that, we were just trying to be out of the box and think of something different that would meet kind of halfway for everybody. But again, I'm good either way. I mean, I just, we were trying to think of some, some way to do it different, but this was not to create a big stir by any shape or form.
Stephanie, repeat what you just said.
I had just asked, on the 17th, there's a...
For the bus drivers, bus assistants, food service assistants, and teachers.
Right. Could they, instead of receiving pay, could they earn their sick leave back that they used?
Sounds fair to me.
Now, the only thing that I need to say is that if your desire is to stick with, like people have brought up, to go back and use the makeup day, we need to decide that makeup day, I mean, then I'll use the first one, November 21st, that would be the day. If you want to go back and do a full day, we'll do a full day, then anybody that put in leave, because I need bus drivers driving students, so if they put in, we would have, we would give them their leave back, because I need them at work that day.
Can I, this is, I think this is the, the question you were trying to ask earlier. So, let's just go to a hypothetical situation here, too. And can I ask you, if we didn't, if, if school was canceled on Thursday, nobody showed up for work on Friday, and then we were going to use the November 21st makeup day, with those hourly employees, their pay would have been docked a full day, they, do you know, like, what, how, what was the...
Okay, they're, right now, operating on the statute Mr. Johnson is referring to, not acknowledging one way or the other what was done in the past, I, I can't confirm that.
Right, no, right.
Yeah. So, if we are not able to pay people for not working, then they would not receive pay for September 2nd, and then when we make it up on September, on November 21st, they would be paid for that day.
That's, I just want to make sure, like if we have another storm, that's, that's the plan, that if school gets canceled, this is X, Y, Z, and that's what happens.
Now, as a board, if you want to say, we're going to pay people for not working, then that's a whole nother ballgame. I'm not sure that's where you're going, or where, that you need to go there, but, but I understand what people are saying.
Let me straight up say, I'm not going there. So that's not where my head's at.
No, and I just wanted to, like you had said, if that was what the thought process was, then we need to be very clear about what it is going to be in the future.
And, and, you know, I see what, what was in the emails for the teacher assistants, food service, and the bus drivers. We do have some clerks, secretaries, that we don't see anything on there for them to make up. We have maintenance workers, they're now being told they have to make up hours, because they were, they were sent home, and there's no time there for them.
Actually, it is. It is talking about school-based hourly people that work less than 247, that means they're not 12-month. There are 247-day professional managerial and administrators. Then there's 247-day non-instructional staff. Those are your workers that are 12-month people, who work six hours on nine, two, need to make up two hours. And it's, every employee is accounted for. So at the end of the day, on this plan, every person will work whatever their designated amount is in some shape or form, whether, if, if, we have some employees that worked a full eight hours on, on the 2nd, because they were in doing facility work. They put in eight hours, and so they have nothing to make up, because they, they're good to go. But the, the, the real issue is, is that how do you say to some employees, you didn't work, but we're going to pay you? Oh, yeah, you worked, but, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't do that.
I've never heard of, I've never heard of paying and not working, that part, just, I don't even see how that even got...
But everybody's accounted for.
But I finally understand it.
Okay, and, and, you know, these, what you're looking at now may be the charts that I told, was told would be here tonight, so I have not seen what you've got, okay? We're not asking for people to be paid that didn't work, okay? It just seems that people that were told to go home now have to make up this time. When they were there, and you're right, some people came in at 9:30, and they worked eight hours. Some people came in at 9:30 and went home at their regular end-of-the-day shift. Some people went in at 7:30 or 7 o'clock, they were told to leave at 12 o'clock, which that wasn't right. Okay? Those people shouldn't have been told that. Now they've got to make up time, and some of them have lost overtime pay because of that. So, and, and you know, the thing is about the bus drivers that came to work, that were sent home, they have in their contract about field trips that are canceled at the last minute, and they're guaranteed so many hours for that. You know, there, there should be some type of show-up pay.
Excuse me, Cam, we are going to sort that out.
Okay, because I'm not understanding that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we are going to sort that part out. That is just common sense, I'm just telling you. And that, and then look at that and see what you think about it. And then let me see Mrs. Phelps or...
And I, and I want you to know that this chart, I did sit down and go over that with both union representatives in my office.
That one?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Cronin was on vacation, so she was not there, so she did not see it. But it is not that I did not show this or, or have conversation on it, every part of that, every point of that, in that, in that conference.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, go ahead and look at it, thanks. Mrs. Phelps, real quick.
Okay, so, some PAs just work six hours, but we work till 3 o'clock on Wednesdays. So we couldn't make time up on Wednesdays, because we're there anyways. So I guess we're just saying, we just believed in the calendar, that it was approved, and that workday that we needed to make up was going to be on the 21st. We just...
But let me ask you something. Does it sound reasonable now, what you've heard, that if you wanted a consistent check, that you would use a, a leave day, but you would be able to bank it back, or put it back on this make-up?
Yeah. I just heard that now, and the people...
No, would that be, would that make sense?
Yeah, and, but no one knew that.
Well, that's because we're talking about it.
So we're, like, everyone was really worried, like, oh my gosh, I'm giving up a day, and I'm going to get it back, so...
Okay, we sort, I think we can sort that out, right?
And I just, it's hard for us to make it up on a Wednesday, all those Wednesdays.
We know that, we know that. That's why we have a whole chart here on how to make up. We could have done.
And we would do that across all classifications, that they would be able to, to make, restore that sick day, if they make up the time.
That would be for your hourly...
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think I'm good with it, then.
I, I agree with that.
Good with it, yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think there's been a motion. So moved.
What did we do?
She's going to make a recommendation.
She made a recommendation, but there's no motion.
I have two recommendations, I think you need to separate them. Do one for students, and then one for employees, that...
We just need to add the bank part.
Okay.
That we'll be able to credit back.
Hourly employees.
If they choose...
If they, if they chose, because it's too late now, right?
Right, right. Well, right now, payroll's running. As we're sitting here, payroll had to run. I did not stop payroll for the whole district. We had to do that. And so what's in the system now is what's going to be paid to people. Whether, if they took a sick leave, then they're going to be paid as if they worked, because they were on leave. If they did not take a sick day, they will not receive pay in their paycheck with that. And then they will receive it as their time, when they do make it up. If an employee took leave and they don't want to come, and they come, and there's a mandatory in-service, and they come, they'll be paid for that mandatory in-service, or if they want to use it as make-up time, then we'll cancel the, the leave out.
That's very reasonable.
But they won't be paid additional.
Right.
That's very reasonable. Okay, so you've heard the superintendent's on the first one, right?
The first one is to suspend early release Wednesday for five Wednesdays, starting October 5th, concluding November 2nd.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any mother, any other discussion, anywhere? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Then the second one is to recommend that the board approve the proposed schedule for make-up dates for employees for time lost as a result of hurri, of the hurricane on September 2nd.
With the additional comments that were...
With the understanding that if someone makes up the time and wants to cancel their leave, we will give them that opportunity to do that.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? We got it all ironed out? Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is good. Five-oh.
Great. Okay, then we're moving on to the discussion agenda. Board members, you have policy 2.80, this is reporting child abuse, there were revisions to this policy. We have had a tentative approval of that, it's been duly advertised. We need to wait for Mr. Johnson to come back, because this is a public hearing. Here he is.
I heard you.
So I'm going to put my recommendation, that I recommend final approval of the revisions to policy 2.80, reporting child abuse as presented, and Mr. Johnson, this is a public hearing.
Sorry.
Matter before the board is amendment to board policy 2.80, reporting child abuse. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this policy, please come forward to the podium. I don't see anyone coming forward. Mr. Chairman, believe it appropriate to close a public hearing.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh.
The next item is, Mr. Johnson's.
Yes, the, the next item, Mr. Chairman, is the approval of the school board final In Ray Antoine Dunbar. This was a recommended order that was entered by Ms. Stibner after a hearing. The, the employee did not raise any issue on objections to the form of the order, any formal objection, so you have none of those to rule on. The transcript and the evidence that was presented at the hearing was provided to each of you for your review. So the matter before the board now is to enter a final order, essentially adopting the provisions of the recommended order, and finding that the particular employee was appropriately terminated under the board policy and statute.
Mrs. Stibner, you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that you approve the final order.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh. Okay.
Board item 11.03 is the superintendent evaluation. We don't have it this evening. One or more people may not have gotten it to me in a timely manner, so I was not able to complete it. No names will be named. I will bring it back at the, I will bring it back at the next board meeting.
Can I, let me just throw this out for the board. I don't know if any of you had a difficult time, a more difficult time completing it this year over last year, because last year with the later timeline, I think we had the benefit of the superintendent's state of the district, as well as the, each of the departments had completed their scorecards. And, you know, then we were able to look at, at data and incorporate that into the evaluation. So I kind of had a, a more challenging hunting method to, to determine, you know, actual results against our targets. So I don't know if, maybe going forward for a future year, we try to coordinate that timeline to have those pieces in place. I just think it would be a much smoother process.
I guess the kick-dog bark, we know who didn't turn it or...
Well, I...
What?
I said person or persons.
Oh, it could be more.
I turned mine in.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I just said I had a more difficult time.
Yeah, it was difficult.
Certainly, I would like to make sure that you had all the information that you needed, considering it's my evaluation. Second of all is, I certainly offered to get any documentation that you might need, and I am always happy to do that, and I did not have any requests to it. So if there are documents that any one of you, and I met with each one of you, I'm more than happy to get that, but not hearing any requests, obviously, because I had a lot of things on my table when we were meeting to go through, and I did not get any requests for that. So if there are things you would like to have and need to have, I am certainly more than happy to get those to you.
In fairness, I was able to get the information, but I, I didn't go through you to, I, you know, asked for information from some of your department heads to, you know, to be able to complete it, in terms of some of the statistics, or like, some of the things that might have been reported last year in the state of the district, you know, like volunteer hours and that, that kind of stuff, that kind of information, that, it was just all so handy before, and, and one easy document, that...
Sure, and I can appreciate that my staff accommodated what you needed to, but...
Yeah, they were.
I was not aware of that, and certainly, I want to make sure that the information you got was complete, and I did not want to leave one thing, so I was unaware of that. So, again, I would like to be afforded the opportunity to make sure that you have complete information, so that I can fairly be evaluated.
You were speaking about the state of the district, that you had, had your hands, some really good things.
Absolutely, it was just so, it was full of highlights, and, you know, statistics, and all sorts of, of areas, and, you know, what, where the district had excelled, and so that, that was real handy. In addition to that, each, each department produces a, a scorecard, based on their, their target, their goals for the year, and whether or not they met them. None of that information is updated online, I don't know whether they've met their targets.
They're being, they're updating them, they're in the process of updating them right now.
So, I mean, if, if the board is willing to kind of defer until those are updated, then, you know, perhaps, maybe some of us could withdraw our evaluation to be able to throw those on there, I, I don't know.
Well, I just don't want to be penalized for something that, that was not, that I did not have an opportunity to be asked for.
Agree.
Okay. Okay, well then individually, since we're not talking about it, maybe y'all touch base for those that turned them in and want to reevaluate.
I can compile them, and have them ready for the next board meeting. If you want to make any amendments or changes, I can do that in the program that we've got to put them all together.
And when, when do you need that information, Mr. Johnson?
I'm not giving any of them back.
When do you need that information, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah?
When do you need that information? In order to have it at the next board meeting?
I'm going to compile them based on the five that I have right now.
Four.
Five.
No, he has all of them.
Only have four.
Or three.
I don't know yet, I haven't checked my email.
I, I think he's gesturing about your microphone.
I'm sorry.
You need to talk in your mic.
I am going to go ahead and put those together now, and if you want to make any changes, I can go back into them before I send them out. But if, you know, the superintendent needs to have a right to be able to review it before they're brought to the meeting as well, so assuming that we're going to do it on the 26th, then I would think that if you want to make any changes a week before that, I would need whatever changes you have.
By the 19th, you need to have any changes to him.
That way I'll get everything by the 20th.
I need to know what information is missing. I know that the staff right now is in the process of updating their scorecards with it, and, you know, you know, I coordinate the process of that, I actually coordinated the whole development of that whole system here in our district, and provide that oversight. So I'm not aware of what information you need, what, you know, those kinds of things. But again, I just...
I would encourage anyone on, on this board, particularly with our final evaluation of our superintendent, that they feel comfortable with what they, the way that they are, the information they have in order to make that assessment, and encourage, if there are any questions, to contact the superintendent directly. That's what, I think we're done with that conversation.
Well, and everybody needs to get it in, because this is the superintendent's evaluation, and it also is dealing with her pay as well. We had a whole lot, long discussion about pay, and people are messing with hers.
All right, Ethan. Okay.
I have my report.
Please.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I wanted to give some Lake County Schools' recognitions for the 2016-17 school year. We had three principals accepted into the Commissioner's Leadership Academy. Bob Sherman from Astoria Elementary School, Brennan Burkhead from Sorento Elementary School, and Stephanie Amayuski from East Ridge Middle School, so congratulations to them. And our Principal of the Year this year Achievement Award goes to David Bordenkurcher from Villages Elementary School, one of our eight elementary schools this year. And Assistant Principal is Marlene Strong from Mount Dora High School. And Ms. Strong was, oversaw the graduation rate project at Mount Dora High School, and if you'll remember, Mount Dora High School had a soaring...
Yes, they did.
...spike in the graduation rate, and that's thanks to Ms. Strong's leadership, and so it's nice to see her recognized for that as well. Just a couple other items. Board members, you know, we worked on your legislative priorities. I wanted to give you a copy of this. This, obviously, is not on the agenda tonight, but here is the draft of that. I will put this on the 26th agenda for your, your final action or that. So if there are any changes or anything you'd like to see, please let Natalie or I know, and we'll make sure that we get that taken care of. But this was the value of the conversation we had the, the other week on that.
Has this been submitted to the FSBA for the purposes of the Legislative Committee?
What we did is, there, there was a template, and we just put ideas, the suggestions, What we did is, there, there was a template, and we just put ideas, the suggestions, and so we did submit every one of those on a Natalie Challenger, that one.
Great, thank you.
So, if there's anything else that needs to be added, we can do that. We had the coalition meeting today, and I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that particular meeting. We had a presentation by the Central Florida Zoo Education Outreach, and if you know, the Central Florida Zoo is in Sanford. They have been working with Seminole County, because that's the county they're in. They, they want to have an education outreach. They want to become more of an educational teaching organization rather than just a zoo where you go for a field trip and see the animals and go home. So, they're really looking to expand and build, they have 15 acres there to build kind of a facility that was more educational, to focus on STEM with the veterinarian assistance program, more of the animal sciences arena and those kinds of things, all the way from K, all the way up through 12th grade, and to do that. So, they really want to focus on that. But they also know that they've got to, they are a not-for-profit organization as well, and so they have to build an infrastructure and a facility that is educationally, under that criteria. And so, they're actually going to the legislators this year to seek funding, and so they were coming to apprises of their program and their desire to have, be more educationally oriented, and that we, if, if we were so inclined to speak to it when we went to Tallahassee and to show their support, that's really was the ask for that. We had a nice discussion about wellness centers and best practices on that. We talked about micro credentialing today, and so a lot of the districts were going to get together, I think it's on October 3rd, to talk about what districts are doing with micro credentialing, and how do we kind of coordinate that at the state level as well. We are going to have at our next coalition meeting an update on House Bill 7029 regarding the school choice all the districts are working on. And then, board members, you know that we're coming up that we have to do the ethics update that has to be done by December 31st. At the November coalition meeting, they're going to be doing the ethics training, so that's free of charge. It's just four hours on that November meeting. It's the second Monday of the month. You can attend that, and we'll probably need to get numbers if you want to attend that. The other option you have is to attend FSBA in December, or you can pay for the online, yeah, I mean, the district will pay for you to do the online with FSBA.
Yes, ma'am, I have a question about that. And I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure. We're going out, but don't, we still have to do the ethics for this year, correct?
Yes, I, I believe that's the case. We can verify that, but I remember when Dr. Howard went off, he was still told...
Ms. Fisher did too, yeah.
Because of the, the, the year that you were in, so...
Okay. You'd verify, thank you.
We can verify that. So, I just wanted you to be aware that November is an, is an option for you, for that, if you want to attend in person as opposed to doing it online or going to Tampa for that particular one. The last thing that I wanted to share is that we're getting ready to do the coalition, not the coalition, the FSBA dues that comes due about February. One of the items that did come up in, a couple of board members had asked questions, it wasn't part of the official meeting, is that this year, there, the change in the statute said that, it used to be that as a board, we paid the dues for a whole board. Now, the statute is, is that a individual board member can opt out and not have their dues paid. You can do it individually as opposed to collectively as a group, and some of the school boards are addressing that now. I don't know that, I haven't seen anything on that, whether there's a timeline. It's usually February that we pay the dues, but I just, that was asked of us, and so I'm putting that on the radar, that you need to think about that. You may not want to make a decision. Seminole County has already made a decision as a board, some other boards were discussing it, but whether you want to wait till after the election. But what that means is that if three of you want to belong to FSBA, three of you can belong to FSBA, and two don't have to. If one wants to belong and the other four don't, or as a whole board if you want to, but it does make a difference in what we pay in dues. So, I just wanted to put that on the radar for, for you with that, that we need to talk about that. Mr. Dodd did ask a question about school board policy 2.31, if I can bring it up.
Sure, absolutely, yes.
It's the student representative to the school board, and this policy has outlined very much in detail, it's very prescriptive. Last year, and, and what it basically says is that there is a rotation, it's to go in alphabetic order. And we have been going in alphabetic order, but we do rotate so that the same school doesn't have this first board meeting. So, back in 2006, we started with East Ridge and went alphabetically, but then the next year, we rotated it so that Uces High School started first with the first board meeting, and so that everybody didn't always have the same month. So, that's been the rotation. However, in here, last year, there was one, one time where we went Mount Dora High School, it was Leesburg High School, Mount Dora High School, and then Lake Minneal. So, they did go out of alphabetic order because of accommodating the student representative and what meeting they could and couldn't come to. I think there were some other activities. So, Mr. Dodd said that probably we want to change the policy since we didn't follow the alphabetic order, and certainly, I don't want to be in violation of board policy.
Yeah, I was thinking, leaving it the superintendent's discretion to go in the order that, you know, best meets everybody's schedule. I don't know, so, I guess that'll come forward, right?
Why don't we, because we need to schedule, look at a couple of policies, and I think we can blow through these one. I have one as well I want to look at, so...
Yeah.
So, I'll just schedule this on another workshop.
We'll do another workshop.
That'll work.
You bet, you bet.
And then the last thing is, we did send letters of condolence to the family of David Thomas Evans, brother of Allison Ald, bookkeeper at Leesburg High School. Thank you.
Okay. Board member comments, and we'll start with...
Where you always start.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
One time I changed it.
These two gentlemen that I'm going to talk about are not educators, but they were great leaders in the community, and we've lost two great ones this week. David Norris, who's an attorney here in Taveries, great loss there. He volunteered, helped coach, did all kinds of things. The other one is MC, and he's with the Lake Sheriff, Lake County Sheriff's Department, and I've known him for probably 30 years. Great man. His family is definitely shocked by the loss of him. David's was, he had cancer, but MC, it happened in an accident. So, if you keep them all in your prayers, I would appreciate that. Then I have one question, because I always read the Board of County Commissioners' agendas, and they've got an item on there for wellness center for the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. And I think when we started all this, Carol, we talked about bringing in municipalities and the county because it would benefit us all, instead of creating your own centers everywhere. They haven't contacted you, have they? Okay. I just want them to understand that it is easier and, and more cost-effective to the public if they go in with a center that's already established and working well. So, that's just out there. Thank you.
Brilliant. Mr. Dodd?
Sure. In addition to the, the schools that Dr. Moxley had mentioned, who had given such a moving 9/11 performance, I had the opportunity to attend East Ridge High School's Rhythm of the Night performing on Friday night. My goodness, I, I thought, I thought I saw you on the way out, but we, we'd missed each other. And I don't know that I get overly emotional, but I think it brought me to tears a few times. They, they did a fantastic job remembering the events of that day and the people who were involved in the rescue efforts, as well as anybody who's, who's fought for our freedom. And so, a big shout out to, to them for that performance. It was truly, truly a work of art. That being said, I know that East Ridge High School would probably love for you to go online and buy your tickets to Shrek, November 3rd through 5th, because a couple of days of rent were canceled due to the weather, and their budget may be a little lean, so I, I think they're hoping for some strong ticket sales, so that's the, the plug for Shrek, November 3rd through the 5th. Onto a couple of serious topics that, that I think I would love to see as future topics for us to discuss and be more involved in. One, I, I know the events that have occurred in Leesburg continue to be rather serious in nature for, you know, and a big concern for, for anybody in the public and for the students, the faculty, the community members. And I know that, that the community itself has had a significant amount of discussion, especially when we talk about the work that has been done by anti-bullying groups to increase awareness. And I, I guess, I feel like the one piece that might be missing is, what is our call to action as a board? To, to respond to, to all of those, and what can we do more to, to take the next step? You know, I, I think that folks out there are saying that we've got some really good rallyers, that, you know, that, you know, we're people that are really good at rallying the community, but what's the next step? And, and so that's where, I guess, I'd look for information about what the, the district is doing and what its next steps are, and what, how, how can we as a board support those efforts? And I think, you know, particularly in the world of social media, this is especially problematic because, you know, with the events of Friday or being posted on Twitter that anybody in the world could just go look at, it, it doesn't help to eradicate the problems and the issues. So, so that's where I look to us as a board, to, to talk about those next steps. And, and one other, I, I don't know if this is necessarily a topic or more of an observation, but an article that was in Time Magazine recently talked about screen time for children. And I know that we, as a district, have adopted a number of computer programs that are used in the classroom. And, and, you know, and this article went so far as to, to try to argue that there is maybe a correlation between the increases in ADHD against this, because, you know, kids are constantly looking for the, the next item to entertain themselves and, and, you know, that, that is a person no longer that? You know, it doesn't have to be this dynamic little cartoon jumping around on the screen, and then, and then they get bored of that and then go on to the next thing. And so, as I think about this, not only is it a classroom implication for us and how teachers are using that, you know, maybe, you know, what, what does the guidance look like from the district to teachers and how to use these programs, but additionally, outside the classroom? And I can think about this one because I know of a, a number of parents who have approached me this year, saying that their students have required iStation work at home, or required i-ready work at home, or additionally, MobiMax. And I was honestly surprised, we actually were still using MobiMax, because I thought that iStation had taken the place of that for reading, but, but multiple programs. And where it got particularly challenging is in some households, they don't have a device, or they have got one device and multiple children who all have to try to accomplish this homework. And, and I thought, well, there's no guarantee that that homework actually aligns with the standards that the teachers are teaching at the time, because, you know, based on the diagnostic nature of istation, i-ready, you might be working on different standards. And, and so I guess, maybe, maybe, I, I think I'm interested there in, in what, what kind of direction the district is, is giving in, in istation, i-ready, and MobiMax outside of, of school. And then, and then finally, one other topic that I'd, I think I'd be interested in the board discussing a little bit more, is, and maybe there's no interest for this, I'm not sure, because through, through the workshops, I, I kind of alluded to this and brought this up, was the idea of increasing the transparency of the school budget, that we, we never see them. We don't know what the plan is. And the idea in, in saying this isn't to increase control, I, I don't want to increase the control of the budget, but just the transparency of the budget, that certainly, the principal needs to be able to have the flexibility to change that. But I guess, in order for us to properly allocate to their needs, it'd be nice to know what are their needs, and how does that plan change over time? What are the unfunded needs that they're not able to meet? Just as we send our unfunded list of capital needs to Tallahassee as that addendum, what are the schools saying is their unfunded list of needs? How does that change over the year, and how does it end up at the end of the year?
That's great.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I don't either.
I just have a couple of things. That on the 19th, we had a meeting scheduled that was canceled based on the election, and I just want you to know that actually Chairman Parks and I spoke, and that it's going to continue, but it felt better that after November and after we have a new board set. And I think those would be, we had a, a number of topics that after the notification was sent out, Commissioner Campion contacted me, and Mr. Johnson, and I, and Melanie, and she sat down, and there's some tweaking and some things we're going to be bringing to the board at the next workshop, that I think you'll be pretty excited about, by the way. So, and I think that as we go forward, I want to mention for just a second, since you mentioned the FSBA, that the FSBA, when I checked in on dues, we're paying like 21.7, I think, as a board. Broward County, I always thought, because they were, why did they control so many things? They only pay like 24. So, I really think we're paying too much, but whatever.